With liberty and justice for all. Superintendent Ravino, would you like to proceed?
I think I will.
Thank you.
Clearly, this is a very different meeting than any meeting I've had in eleven years.
And I'm really happy about to be able to present to all of you our guests. And these are our students who are visiting here from China. They have now completed their first week in the Fitchburg schools. They spent all day Saturday, I think it was, on a field trip to Boston. Everyone made it back? Everybody? So, okay, someone counted. Mona, you counted. So, everyone is here, and I thought it would be a great opportunity to introduce them to the school committee and introduce them to the whole community. And I'd like to invite, I've been working very closely with Li Chen. The organization that we're working with is called Boston Wise. And Li Chen is here. Also, David, I've been working with David and Mona. And I would like Li, if Li could come up and just give you a little introduction of his program and what they've been doing here. So, if maybe you give your spot and mic. And Li, if you could come up and speak to the school committee. So, for all of you, this is the school committee of the Fitchburg Public Schools. And the mayor, Mayor Dina Tali, is the mayor of the city, and also, he's the chair of the school committee. So, this group is the group that oversees everything that goes on in the Fitchburg Public Schools. Li?
Reverend and distinguished committee members, it's an honor to be here to talk to you. Boston Wise is a company that builds two-way bridges. By that, I mean, like, we run programs that bring Chinese student here to interact with American student, but we also take American student to China to learn Chinese culture and interact with Chinese people. Today, I just walked in the hallway of the middle school, and what I noticed a theme is little things can make big differences. And I think in one aspect, what we're doing is Mandarin, and there's nothing really special. We take student here and arrange host families, take student to interact with American kids. It seems that there's nothing special, but underneath it, I think, there's something special. Because when two cultures are met, there usually there's some tension or even conflict. I just can give you some small examples. One example is we run summer programs. And at one summer, we had student coming from China, and he's actually a military buff, and he's really into military documentaries and TV shows. And he, at the beginning of the program, he just told us, he said, he thinks American, the US and China are competitors, and eventually, they will become adversaries, and there will be a war between the two countries. But at the end of the program, he told us different story. He said that every American he met is wonderful and very nice. He gave me a very small example. He said, one time, he bumped into American person, but before he could apologize, the other person said sorry first. And that's just, that's just a small act of kindness that changed him. He said, at the end of the program, he said, "I don't want to go to war with a country full of nice people. I don't want to be adversary to a country full of friendly person to me." And I think that's just one small example, that such changes can happen just because a small act of one person. And another example I can give you is, it's just not bigotry or stereotype, it's just not on China's side. It's also American side as well. Once, a superintendent from a public school district told me that she hired a Chinese teacher, a Mandarin teacher, and there were people coming to her office to protest, said, "Why did you hire a communist to our school district?" And that just really surprised me, that in today's world, that people still use this word to describe people from China. And so, actually, when we first run the program at that school district, there were not many host families that we have here, and so, we had to really bus student in to participate that program. But at the end of the program, there are many families came up to us and said, "If you want to run this program again, we want to become, to be host families." And that's another example, that by person-to-person exchange, by doing that kind of changes, we really build friendships, build goodwill among all two peoples. And the third example I want to give is, last April, we took a group of American students back to China, and they stayed with Chinese host families. And one host mom told me at the end of the program, she said, "That past week was the happiest time for my son, and also, it changed my life as well, because that's, that I see that my son learned so much from his American, American school buddy. And the first time, I want to really to send my kid to America, because I feel like they can find really friendship and happiness in the US." So, I think just those small things, what I have encountered, and I'm sure a lot of you and host families and students have encountered, that really make a positive change in people's lives. And that probably would not be easy, that there were not every, probably, there will not be happy stories every day, but in the end, I think the effort will be worth it. And I hope this is a beautiful beginning of a long friendship, and I hope we will see students from, students, educators, and families from Fitchburg going to visit China very soon. Thank you.
So, we have, I think it's seventeen students, and I want to, you know, give a shout-out and a thank-you to our host families. Lynn Thomas is one of our hosts, and her family. Robert Pack, Midora King, Phil Moore and his family, and some of them have posted photos on Facebook of the activities and things they've been doing. Juana and Nate are one of our host families. Lisa Legato, Anne Amico, who's to work in central office. Those are all host families here and taking students. So, what I'd like to also do is have an opportunity, if one or two of you would like to, if you could share with the school committee, you know, your experience or some of the things that you've been doing, or some of the observations that you have about your time in Fitchburg. Would you like to go ahead and introduce yourself?
Yeah. We are people smile, do not, do not serious. During the first, I want to introduce my name to everybody. My name is Waterman. If you, you maybe think, this guy is very strange. Why do you name is Waterman? I can tell you, for a simple reason, I have a wonderful dream. In Waterman, it look like, the atmosphere look like Earth, and it's green. Green means the environment good. So, I wish, I hope the Earth environment be better. And I see that in America. I see American environment is very good, and it difference with China. In China, we use coal for so air pollution, but America, I never see any air pollution. Yeah, this is the first. And second, I'm go to school, I very happy meeting my school buddy. And my school buddy is very difference with Chinese students. My school buddy usually do sports, and he like play basketball and badminton and baseball. Yeah. And the American usually after school in two o'clock, and China, we usually, we usually after school in nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock at night?
At night.
So, China, a lot of students just study very, study crazy very day for 高考, it seem like SAT.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And America, we two o'clock after school, we can do some sports, do something model union course. Yeah, it's very good. And three, I meeting my host family, it's very special. They are living in a house, living in a house. In China, we usually living in big building apartment. Yeah, it difference. My host family is also very friendly.
Who's your host family?
Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah. He's an Iron Man. He usually do sports. Yeah.
Iron Man? Is that what you said? He's Iron Man? That's what I thought you said.
We're gonna remind you of that.
And we run together, he can run around the mountain. We run the mountain for six kilometer. And he's very easy to do that, and I'm very, you know, very tired. Yeah, that's all.
Yes, thank you.
No, 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 sit, sit, yes. You know what I noticed? Teenagers are the same everywhere. All your buddies behind you, they giving you hard time, they giving you the razz. You'll have to look that one up.
So, I had an old list here, so I forgot that Cora Lee is also one of the hosts with Jerry Beck, so thank you, Cora Lee. And I think some of you know that in 2005, I went to China, and I lived in a middle school in Lei Yang. They knew where Lei Yang was, and I also showed them the statue of Taolun, Tai Luen? How do you pronounce it, the, in Lei Yang, the founder of paper, the inventor of paper? Tai Luen? I think it's Tai Luen. Tai Luen, Tai Luen. So, here, in the whole country of China, I'm sent to a city of Lei Yang, a small city of 500,000. And on my first field trip, we went to visit the original house of Tai Luen, who invented paper. What are the chances that I would be assigned to a city where the, it's the, where paper was invented and come from a city where paper was basically the mainstay? Also, Jeremy was telling me, I think some of you were in Mr. Grant's biology class? Who was in Mr. Grant's biology class? Doug Grant? Raise your hand, were you? And you had some observations about the hands-on biology experiments, which were very different than they experienced in China. But then they went to the math class, and I think the observation was that the math being done here is done way in middle school at those times. So, there's differences in, you know, the different subjects and the education and the way that it's done. Is there anyone else from any of the students who wanted to share your experience? Just push the mic over towards you.
A young lady also over here.
Yep, okay.
I'm Kevin from, I'm a exchange student from Guangzhou, and I grab, I'm glad that I have a chance to exchange to the Fitchburg. It's like, it's like a, you know, it's like tours, connect China's culture and American culture. When he fix together, I think it's very special. It's very special time, because, you know, some American students didn't, did not know the culture of the China. And we also didn't know some of the cultures, like civil world, and we learned about in history class. And also, we also learn about the science, environmental science, before we didn't know that. And also, we mix, made lots of friends, and we all, I have friends like Sage, it's like, he like play baseball, and have, I, my buddies Austin, he like play basketball. We have the same hobby, so we can talk together, we can talk lots of things. And also, I have a one family, host family. Juana is my host family. Yeah, we have lots of things to talk. We, we also, when we, when they pick up, pick, pick me up to the, pick me up to the house, we also, we usually will hand out like the Chinese cultures, like, and what do you learn in China? And we also talk about the history, like civil world, when we learn in China. And also, we talk about lots of things. So, I think this program is where we like, like tours, connect our relationship. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Was there one of the girls that wanted to talk? One of the girls, yep? No, boy, okay, so push the microphone over and give up your chair. Oh, you have got a written speech.
Hello, everyone. In this day of travel, I very happy, and the first week, we receive many famous university. For example, Hafu Yellow, I think this is very nice. Last week, I come to the beautiful Fitchburg school, to biggest difference education of the American, American school and Chinese school is very different, is the weight of of teaching. The importance mention of the intelligent system, there is no so-called new field teaching book. Teacher, student spoke in class, student has enough change to take part in the discussion. But Chinese student more shy, and afraid of making mistake, fear of disgrace, sound to speaking is no very activity. But Americans, they only want to say what, say what. Often can listen to laugh in the class room. My school buddy is John, he very tall and very stronger, he have a lot of muscle. He like basketball as much as I do, I like man, my school buddy, because he very friendly and handsome. Often, often help me when I am in trouble, in addition. I have very, I have a very nice host family, he called Mr. Park, he always take care of me, accompany, accompany at to play and watching movie, movies. I think he very nice. At last, I want to say thank you, Mr. Park, for take care of us. That's all, thank you.
This young lady want to say something right here in the purple, did she?
Yeah, okay.
First, I want to say it's a great honor to take part in the exchange program to Fitchburg. My name is Katniss, it's the name from The Hunger Games. This is my second time in the America, because I've been to the east part of America before. And this, this experiment, no, this experience is totally different, sorry, it's totally different from the one that I, the last time, because I, I have the chance to study with the local student, and in the Fitchburg High School, and I really had a good time. My school buddy is Hannah, she is a very good student, and with, she's have, having great mark, and she always do her work fast and well. And when I, when I tell her the first time that we have like long time in school, she was like, "Oh, my God, is it possible?" And it's different in the America from China, because they have more time to do their own things. But in China, the only thing we do at school is studying. And also, in the America, the student don't have to wear their uniform. In China, we have to wear our very, very ugly uniform.
Spoken like a true teenager.
Yeah. And, and in the American high schools, they, they allow the, to have boyfriend or girlfriend. We are not allowed to have girlfriend or boyfriend at all.
You know, I like China, that's pretty smart. I'm gonna take notes on this, can I? I kinda like that. I like that, that time. So, you start school at what time in the morning?
At about half past seven.
And you're there till nine o'clock at night?
Yeah.
I like that.
You're all in middle school, right? You're in middle school? So, you're in high school? Some of you are in middle school?
No.
No, all high school? Okay. So, it's, is it a boarding school? Is yours a boarding, so you go for the week?
Depends your parents.
Right. And they do their own laundry, if they're at the boarding school?
I like this even more.
So, you can exchange your student.
Yes, yes, and you will come here.
Tell them that we tell you this.
Are any of you surprised about how many, how much American kids work after school? Like, go to a job after school? Like, do you all have jobs after school, or do you?
No, we have, we can, we can only have job after we are sixteen or eighteen, some job has to be eighteen. And some of them are only fifteen, so we can't go to get jobs. And although some of our classmates is over sixteen, we have no time to do the jobs.
Yeah, school is your job.
Yeah. We are full-time student. And my host family is Mrs. Rivera and Jerry Beck. And they are very nice to us, and three of us stay with them, and they take us to school every morning and take us back home every afternoon. And they also take care of us, like, they, they teach us to use the, the machine, washing the, to wash clothes. And they also cook some very delicious Spanish food for us. And also, we, we usually talk, like, when we are having dinner, and we, the, our, the three girl, girls that stay with, with them, also make friends with their daughter. And we are just like a whole family, and they also take us to see other parts of the city, like, one, this, in the Saturday, we went to the, went to the beach and to see the butterflies, and we really had a good time. And I hope that I can learn a lot about the American culture, and I wish I can go to a better college in the America, and that's all.
You will.
Any other questions from school committee members?
I think he's gonna speak. This young man wants to say something. Shut up and run. I like that shirt.
I'm pretty sure to have this chance to go to America, have the, this program, and my name's Joger, and J-O-G-G-E-R. And, and when I was in middle school, and I used to running after school, and my friends give this name to me, and I like this name. And my classmate has told that, and in China, we have a very hard and, and we have lots of work to do in our school and have little time to do our own things. And that's the reason that why, why I like the, the American children's life, because they can finish the school early and do the things that they want. And I, I'm really like to do some sports games or do my own things after school, but in China, have, I have little chance to do that. And this time, I come to, this is my first time to come to America, and I, when I first come here, came here, and the first, but the first thing that I want to try is to finish the school early and do the sport games and with the students here. And, and that's really good to finish school early. And, and when the days before I came to America, I was a little bit worried about is the food or the environment here and fit for me. But after I got, I got here, I think that it's very great. The air and the environment here is, you know, much better than in China. And, and my, my host family is Mrs. Juana, yeah?
Mrs. Juana, yes.
And she take, she takes good care of me and my classmates, and she try to do everything to make us live comfortable here, and I really have a good time in your, in your home, and it's great to talk with you about some, you know, cultures or just some, some interesting things. And my school buddy, his name is Nico, and he is a very, an open boy, and he, and he can play with many students in the school, and many teachers know him, and I think he is really famous in the.
He's really famous.
I can have many communicate with the students here and know about the American cultures, and I can also talk some, talk about some Chinese culture, and that's a great experience for me. And, and, and this time, I come to America is, I think it's a really good trip for me. That's all.
Well, we have, Mayor, I have gifts for our students. And you've seen these before. So for the, for the girls, we have, because if, if you like these, these are gonna be the uniforms for the American students after you leave. So we have a scarf for the girls with the Pittsburgh. I know you've seen this F all over Pittsburgh High. And for the boys, we have the Pittsburgh tie. So we have one for each of those, each of you. So I'll go out and hand these to the girls. I think you need this one. So we have enough for everybody. Does everybody have one? Is there another?
Yeah.
They have one more?
Two more.
Nope, there's one there, so. Oh, yeah. So thank you for our first shot at this. I think it's been a big success. Thank, you know, one of you corrected one of the words that you said and used the other perfect word. That was pretty amazing. None of us can speak Mandarin. So, I, I'm assuming. So for you to be able to express yourself at a school committee meeting on television in English is just an amazing thing, so. Oh, a gift to Pittsburgh. Why don't you present this to the mayor of Pittsburgh? Because when I was in Laiyang, it was, the mayor of Laiyang presented me with the gift. So this would be appropriate for you to present to Mayor Dina Tolly.
So nice. Thank you so much. Oh, my goodness. Oh, this is beautiful.
Yeah, it's a decoration on the desk.
It's a, what is it? It's a decoration for your desk.
Very nice. Oh, beautiful, beautiful. All right.
Isn't that nice? That's very nice. Thank you so much.
So our first souvenir, our first exchange.
On behalf of the, on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh, thank you so much. It's upside down.
Well, on the other side of the world.
I, I was just about to figure that out.
It would be right side up on the other side of the world.
Where's Jerry Beck when you need him? You're the artsy guy. I didn't know. You know, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. We, we welcome you to the United States, obviously. We have a great deal to learn from you. Probably more so than you learning from us. But I think some of the things that you, you do in your lives is truly impressive for such young folks and the amount of commitment that you have in your education. We, we find that to be certainly admirable. But we have to caution you of one thing. Not all cities are as wonderful as Pittsburgh. You've gotten to the top right here, so. Everything be, after this is gonna be kind of a letdown. Thank you again.
Thanks very much. Have a good night.
There's, there's Iron Man. Iron Man. There he is.
Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore, come on up, Mr. Moore. Come on up and say hi to everybody.
Mr. Moore, how about?
Come on up and give us fifty. Let's go. Drop down.
Mr. Moore is also, you know, the director for Step Up to Excellence.
That's right, that's right.
How about sending somebody to China, Step Up to Excellence?
Actually, I would like to be the first to go. I told Superintendent Robinell that one of my selfish reasons for asking the students to come to my house was, I thought this is perfect. I, I would love to travel. I'd love someday my son to travel and stay with Watermelon and Trevor. The two of these young men, they've been fantastic. Absolutely wonderful, wonderful kids. We've enjoyed their company. They've been witty, they've been polite, as play can be. Little rough getting them up in the morning. Let's say that right now. I don't know if everybody struggles, but they, they do it. But wonderful experience. So I, I wanna be the first to take a group of Pittsburgh kids over there. And go to Guangzhou and then learn about their culture since they've been so polite to come and experience ours.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Traditionally, this would be a good time to go for ice cream. That's what we do in our country.
Juana, Andre's paying.
Bob, Bob is.
You get this or do?
No, well, it.
Does it matter?
Doesn't matter.
We're gonna have to open up, we'll give it, we'll give it to Capasso. You can put it in the museum.
There we go.
Nick. Probably get a display, you can put that in the museum. Huh? Beautiful.
Mayor, did you wanna go back to the others or?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll continue, report of school committee member and student reports. As, student reports, please, Ms. Velasquez.
Well, as most of us know, Thursday are the Pittsburgh relay races. Um, it's a, it's. Yeah. It's a very exciting, exciting time. And there's gonna be a lot of people going. And it's, um, it's just a wonderful time for everyone to enjoy and cheer on their school and their classes in case Pittsburgh High School. Also, this week is Spirit Week for Pittsburgh High School. Um, today was Favorite Fan T-shirt Day. Tomorrow's Twin Day, then Represent the Cause Day, Favorite Sports Team, and Hawaiian Day, followed by a pep rally on Friday. And cast math for the sophomores starts tomorrow and extends until Wednesday. And I know from, my sisters told me that there's been a lot of preparation homework for the impasse, so I'm hopeful that sophomores are gonna do great on them. Also, AP tests, they were last week. And makeups will also finish this week, which, um, the AP tests are, and the AP classes, they're a wonderful opportunity for this Pittsburgh high students to advance their learning to a farther level. And I think the tests are a great opportunity. Also, the talent show was last week as well. It was amazing. Um, Pittsburgh does have talent and it was great to see everyone show off. And the spring concert was also last week, which was a wonderful and musical and fun-filled night as well.
What, what time is the relays?
Um, the relays are five thirty.
Five thirty.
And that's on Thursday?
Yes.
Not tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Other report of committees, my school committee report, we have one remaining contract to negotiate, and we're close to a resolution on that. Nutritional Services, completed six so far. Of course, we've got the budget tonight. And then the citywide budget will begin on Wednesday. Report from Chairman Stevens regarding the Resource Committee.
Resource Committee, next Resource Committee meeting will be on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth.
Okay. Well, Policy Committee, Marissa, please.
The policy, um, next policy meeting is Thursday, the twenty-sixth, at five o'clock.
Okay. And Ms. LaBelle Pierce regarding the Student Support Committee?
There's nothing new to report right now.
Okay, thank you. School Personnel Committee, that would be me. I think I just mentioned the contract negotiation, so we've covered that. And Executive Committee? Who is that? That's me too, isn't it? I'm not sure what to report on that. Is there anything? There's really nothing to report, okay? And we've got the Student Report and Staff and Student Presentation. So, next, approval of the minutes?
No, well, we have the Staff and Student Presentation. So I'd like to invite Lourdes Ramirez to come up with Alyssa Saintier and Nick Capasso from the Pittsburgh Art Museum. You've seen this because there's been a lot of media about it, great media, to the new sculpture at the museum and the naming of it. But I thought it would be really important to put a face with the talent. So we have Alyssa here tonight. So if, Nick, if you could start by giving just a synopsis of what this was all about, and then have our artist, our writer. That's the, that's an artist too.
Creative writer.
Okay. Thank you Superintendent Robinell. I'm Nick Capasso, I'm the director of the Pittsburgh Art Museum. This past fall, fall of two thousand and fifteen, we erected a very large sculpture in the courtyard of the museum facing Elm Street. It's a large, abstracted, red figure that seems is engaged with the architecture of our building. And we commissioned it from a Massachusetts artist named Douglas Kornfeld. We wanted to work with Doug for several reasons. First of all, he's a great artist and he designed a great sculpture. But he's also a very flexible artist and he's also very dedicated to education. And because of the museum's commitment to the community and to education, we worked with Doug to create two separate learning opportunities with this sculpture. First learning opportunity occurred at Monte Tech, where students at Monte Tech actually built the sculpture under the artist's direct supervision. They built it from stock steel, they painted it in their auto body bays, and they helped install the sculpture, which stands eighteen feet tall. The second learning opportunity was we got the artist to agree to not give the sculpture a title. So that the art museum could sponsor an essay contest for middle school and high school students in our region. And the whole point of the essay was to come up with a good name for the sculpt, the sculpture and a rationale for that name. I was very, I'm very pleased to report that we received over sixty submissions, not only from the schools in Pittsburgh, but from public and private schools throughout our region. From these sixty essays, we, myself and the museum's Director of Education, Laura Howick, and the artist selected five finalists. And all of these finalists, I'm pleased to say, were from the Pittsburgh Public Schools. And so we had a ceremony at the museum a couple of weeks ago. We read all finalist essays and announced the winner. The next day, the Sentinel and Enterprise ran all of the essay, all the finalist essays in the paper. And if you're interested in all the essays, they now appear permanently on our website. The winner of the contest is the young woman sitting next to me, Alyssa Saintier. Are you gonna read your essay in a second?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So Alyssa's essay is now on a permanent plaque outdoors at the museum.
Oh, wow.
With the sculpture. It's also been translated into Spanish for our Latino neighbors. And we're thrilled with the name that she came up with. I think you'll enjoy it too. And I'll, I'll introduce Alyssa.
Well, thank you for having me. So I worked really hard on like a name I thought would fit the sculpture outside the museum. And I did some research and I found a man online named Aza Thurston. And he was one of the many first citizens to live in Pittsburgh. And I decided to name the sculpture Thurston. So I'm going to read my essay now. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Thurston. Thurston is named after one of Pittsburgh's local citizens from long ago, Aza Thurston. He was born in the city of Pittsburgh in seventeen eighty-seven, which would make him two hundred twenty-nine years old today. I believe that Thurston is the perfect name for Pittsburgh's latest sculpture because Aza was also an artist of his own kind. He was a scythe maker. Being a scythe maker allowed him to use his knowledge and creativity to construct a tool that would turn an ordinary overgrown field into a fine sculptured work of art. This connects Thurston to local artist Doug Kornfeld. Doug is also a creative and innovative artist who designed a bold and beautiful metal sculpture who proudly welcomes friends and families to the Pittsburgh Art Museum. Thurston's metal physique will continue to stand proud and tall along with carry on the rich history of the city of Pittsburgh for many years to come.
That's great.
I need to add that this, this contest was open to all students in our region, grade seven to grade twelve. Alyssa's a seventh grader. She won the contest. At the McKay Arts Academy, which is why our principal from McKay is here. Also, in addition to having the plaque in, in her honor outside, Alyssa received a thousand dollar scholarship, which was sponsored by TD Bank, and I want to thank them as well.
Wow, that's great.
And a free membership to the museum.
That's right, family membership to the museum.
Great. And did the committee have any questions? Yes.
Where did you do your research to, to find this information about this man?
Well, first, I went to the Pittsburgh Public Library to see if they had any history books and such. And I didn't really see any names that popped out. So I just looked up some citizens from Pittsburgh and I just found Thurston online.
Very nice.
Is this sculpture lit up? Is it something, when we leave here, we could drive by and?
Yes, it's illuminated at night until ten PM and then a timer turns the light off. You can't miss it.
It's a real landmark.
It's really big.
Right, right, yeah.
It, it is, it is a real landmark for Pittsburgh. And one of the things that I appreciate about this sculpture is that it's very interactive and which the, the artist talked about how important it is when he creates a monument or an art piece, that people would have the ability to interact with it. So it is, it is huge. And, and I have to say that we at McKay are very proud of Alyssa's accomplishment. Two out of the five finalists, one of them is a Pittsburgh High School student, a former McKay student. And for us to have Alyssa recognized and be the winner of the essay contest, we are really proud and I'm thankful to her and her family and their support. And she is a self-driven student and with the support of her teachers, we are really appreciative of this recognition.
Thank you.
I was, I have to say, I was a little bit anxious before the announcements, but whether or not the young individual would be from Pittsburgh, and they were all from Pittsburgh. Thank you. That's right, I mean, exactly.
Nick, just to give you a heads up, if this exchange program goes well, you're gonna have to translate that plaque into Mandarin at some point. It's not working on you.
Good. Congratulations.
Thank you. Very much.
Moving on. Approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting? Make a motion.
I second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the school committee meetings, meeting minutes from April twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, thank you. There's no need for executive session, correct? New business? Unfinished business from previous meetings? Saying none? Any communications?
One thing I'd like to mention, that the Pittsburgh High School Alumni Association meeting is Wednesday night at seven o'clock at Pittsburgh High School.
And I just wanted to mention that I have, some of us have been in touch with Sally Krigan, who is not here this evening. She sends her love and thank you to all of those people who have been concerned about her and her family due to the fire at their home. They are working on salvaging some of their belongings and, and preparing to move forward with their, their plans for, for home.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Any, any, yes, Ms.?
Well, I just wondered, Andre, are we going to hear at all about your summit? The, no, the one with the charter schools? You mentioned that you might.
Talk a little bit about that experience. You were on a panel with the Pioneer Institute and is that on here at all to talk about?
No, I hadn't put it on, but I, I can talk a little bit about it if you'd like.
Just, I'm just interested in how the conversation went.
You want me to do that now?
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I had the opportunity to be on a panel. And it was in Boston and it was actually a charter school meeting. And they invited me on the panel to kinda give a different. And they invited me on the panel to kind of give a different approach. What it was, what, what I focused on and what I've been focusing on and all the things that I've been writing is that, you know, one of the themes of charter schools is innovation. And one of the things that seems to be going missing is the innovation that's going on in all of our schools, you know, every day. So at one point, there actually was a presentation by, and I'm not saying this is a put-down of charter schools at all. It was a very friendly environment and we were all talking about education. And I also kept trying to bring the conversation back to what MASSS, which is the organization that I belong to, what we've been saying all along is if we're really going to take Massachusetts to the next level, we can't develop strategies that only educate six percent of the students. That the focus has to be on all of the students. So that's kind of the theme that I was bringing forward. And in one of the presentations, it was on a, a group of charter schools and the kinds of things that they were doing. And it was really well done and it was very clear and it was very innovative. And then I was able to speak next and every single thing that was in that PowerPoint presentation, we were doing in Fitchburg already. And that was part of my point, is that when you're just the regular school system that does the work, you don't necessarily get the recognition. Or it just becomes an expected thing and it's not put out there as something new and innovative. So I think that's why I'll accept any invitation to something like that, because it's really a chance for me to talk about what the public schools are doing. And in the paper that MASSS wrote this year about the charter school cap, one of the things we stressed was, you know, that, that innovation that's supposed to be key is part of, you know, the work that we do. So it went really well. It was interesting because the person who invited me, Jamie Gass, I worked with when I started my public school career in Chelsea. And he was working with the Boston University Partnership. And he was twenty-three years old. And here I am, you know, thirty years later, coming to this because he is one of the executives for the Pioneer Institute. But I think my view is, we have to keep creating dialogue. Every opportunity we can. And I think our students, you know, they were talking about countries. But I think the premise that they were saying is that unless you talk with the people who have a different point of view, you'll always have different points of view and you'll always be apart. So whatever extent we can, you know, create dialogues, you know, it's better for everybody. So it was really a good experience. I had the opportunity to go to a meeting and talk about Fitchburg being everywhere. So I'm at this meeting this week, I think it was Friday, last Friday. And this was one of the handouts at the meeting. And the, the person, it's the president of the, of this organization, MIAA, who was there. And he handed this out to everybody and he said, Andre, you get extra copies of this because it's one of your students on the cover. So it's Liz Moisen. And again, you know, I don't carry around a little brag book like maybe a grandparent does. But it's really when I go somewhere and someone starts talking about our kids, you know, it's just another great opportunity to say, you know, these are our kids and they're out there and they're really doing wonderful things. So I brought back a copy of this for all of you. So next on the agenda, we have some business to take care of. And that is the appointment of a representative to FLAC and to CAPS. I have been serving on the FLAC board for the past year. I'm perfectly willing to continue doing that. And Mr. Stevens has been serving on the CAPS board and because there needs to be a school committee member on that board.
So we're just calling for a vote on this?
We have to make a motion.
Yes, please.
Yes, we, we have. I'll, I'll make a motion first that we put Andre Ravenel on the FLAC board.
Number fifteen dash six ninety-eight and fifteen dash sixteen. Appoint Superintendent Ravenel to serve as representative for the FLAC Board of Directors. This is, this is twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. Is that a typo?
Yeah.
Should be twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen?
Yeah. The new, you should have the new agenda.
Oh, this is...
Yeah, I handed out a new agenda.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, well, do I have, do you hear a motion?
I made it in a second, I bet.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous?
We need to do the CAPS.
CAPS collaborative member, that would be...
Make a motion to appoint Pete Stevens?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, appoint committee member Pete Stevens, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous? CAPS Capital Reserve Fund.
Okay. I, you did receive a memo, but I will read it for our audience. CAPS Collaborative is in the process of establishing a capital reserve fund. The CAPS Collaborative Board, on which you have a representative, recently voted unanimously to establish the Capital Reserve Fund. And that member on is, is me. And I am also chairman of the CAPS Collaborative Board. As defined in the authorizing law, MGLC thirty-two B and the accompanying regulations, six oh three CMR fifty point oh seven, a capital reserve fund may be established by a collaborative. CAPS is proposing to create this fund to support costs associated with the acquisition, maintenance, improvement of fixed assets as defined in the legislative language which governs collaborative. In addition, capital reserve funds may only be used for the projects or purpose for which the account was established. On a local level, this will allow, this will, funds will allow us to make improvements and enhance our programs while keeping costs down for the sending districts. In part, through the potential establishment of the capital fund, we are able to keep our tuition increase for FY seventeen down to one percent. The last four years, our increases have been from three to five percent. But I think through excellent management, we are now down to one percent for increases for the coming year. The Capital Reserve Fund is approved through the annual budget process the CAPS Board of Directors and follows a three-year plan. The plan will closely review and approve by the Board annually. The current proposed three-year plan includes equipping classrooms with much-needed equipment that reduce district charge back as well as the establishment of an assistive technology lending library, which our member districts will benefit greatly. The assistive technology, it's equipment that's used by special needs students that you don't always need. Could be from a period of weeks to months. And we would make that equipment available to our districts free of charge. The establishment of a collaborative reverse, reverse fund will require a two-thirds vote from our eleven-member districts. The following vote language is being shared with our eleven members with hope that each school can see the value in supporting this initiative for their districts as well as CAPS collaborative. Thank you. Any question?
All right, any questions, any discussion? Seeing none, we vote in fifteen dash six seven zero. Fifteen dash sixteen, a motion is made. And as a district member of CAPS Collaborative, the Fitchburg School Committee supports CAPS Collaborative establishing a capital reverse fund to support costs associated with the acquisition, maintenance, improvement of fixed assets, as approved by the CAPS Board of Directors. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept that.
Motion made. Motion made and seconded, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous.
Next is, every year, the district has to take a vote in terms of opening to school choice. And that can either be by grade or by school or by district. And we traditionally have opened to school choice by district. So you have my recommendation here that the Fitchburg Public Schools advertises for school choice as a district. Next, we have all of the field trips. Washington DC, AMC, Zeeland Fall Hut, White Mountain. So four field trips, Washington DC. First, come up and see if there are any questions. Yes, can bring up backup.
Did we have the button yet?
Good evening, everyone, how are you?
Good evening.
Well, we are winding down all the fundraising and getting ready to roll out to Washington DC. We have a hundred and twenty-seven children going this year. It is one of our smaller groups, but they're all paid for, everyone's all set. We're good to go, all the medical forms are working on. We are going to have a school nurse come with us this year, which I'm very excited about. So that was a new addition just last week. So we were able to do that. In your packet, you, we have our itinerary is set. We'll be arriving on Sunday, June fifth. And we do a great walk around the city. We do an illuminated tour, walking. We head to the Lincoln Memorial, the Vietnam Memorial, the Nurses Memorial, Korean Veterans Memorial, World War II. Just a really great night to start the trip off. And then we head back to the hotel. Then we get up in the morning, we head up to Arlington National Cemetery. We watch the changing of the guard. We head over to Iwo Jima. Then we head to the museum, which is a great interactive museum right in downtown Washington. It's, has a great view on the top, they have four floors. And there's a view of Pennsylvania that the kids can go and take pictures from. And it's just, it's just a spectacular museum. It's one of my favorites, actually. Then we were able to secure enough tickets to go to the Holocaust Museum to do the whole thing, which is really, I'm very happy about that. We start planning for that now. The teachers have been doing a great job preparing the students for the Holocaust Museum. So they'll be able to do the whole thing. So we have quite a bit of time there to do all four floors. Then we go over to the Jefferson, the FDR, Martin Luther King. And that's a really nice kind of around the, around the basin area that we can walk. Last year, the skies opened up. The tour guide said, okay, we have three minutes at this monument. Then we get to get to the bus. And the skies just opened up on us that day last year. Then we head over to this really great venue. It's a wedding venue, but they open up for us to do a dance there with the kids. And it's really open. And a lot of kids, if they don't want to dance, they can go out and sit in, on these really nice couches and hang out and talk with their friends. And it's just, it's a fun night to kind of get the kids to know each other better before they head up to the high school. Then we, next day, we check out of our hotel and we head to the National Zoo. We drive by the National Cathedral. We opted for more time at the zoo because it's really a popular thing with the students. So we did longer there. Then we head over for our big picture that we take every year at the Capitol Building. And then we hit the Smithsonian's. And then we head for Baltimore to go see the Orioles play Kansas City Royals. So I'm pretty excited at Camden Yards, it's a great night. They get to sit in the stadium, they get to eat hot dogs and have their snacks and their dinner there. And then we head back to another hotel, Comfort Inn, has really comfortable beds. It's really a nice hotel. We get up in the morning, have breakfast. And we, we're back in Fitchburg by six thirty that night. And the kids are ready to go home by that point. But it's a whirlwind tour, it's a taste of Washington. I tell the kids that, you know, this is just to kind of check stuff out. And, you know, you process it more as you go, as you get a little bit older. So I'm very excited for this year. I think it's going to be a great trip. And I have my great, my chaperones are so dynamite, they're so great. I have a great team that comes with me every year. And they're just dedicated to the trip and they want to make sure the kids have the best possible time. And the tour company provides us with really outstanding tour guides that really do the academic piece during the day. I was able to get three of the really good ones for the buses this year. So I'm thrilled about that. That really specializes with middle school kids. Because they're not, you know, usually the tour guides do all the, the older people that come down on the bus groups. But they really specialize with the middle school kids. So it's really, it's been great having the tour guides with us. So that's...
How many chaperones are there?
I, they want a one to fifteen ratio. I'm down to one to probably ten or eleven. I just, I just feel better when there's more adults around. And Arthur Baxter, who's our clinician, will be coming. And he's been really helpful when things come up with the kids that I need help with. And we do bring, I think this year, we have four of our special needs students coming, two from the autism program. So he's really...
That's great.
Yeah. And I have a paraprofessional coming, two paraprofessionals coming that are just outstanding with the kids. And it's really, it's going to be fun.
How many years doing this?
I took it over for PTC.
Nineteen eighty-five.
Yeah.
I took over ninety-three.
Okay.
So...
And we've been doing this since eighty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The kids went away, too.
Yeah, I took your children, yeah.
It was the first time they, you know, it was one of those type, the first time that they went away overnight.
Yeah, yeah.
Nerve-wracking, but I mean, but they...
And now we have cell phones and Facebook. And I, as soon as we get on the bus, I start taking pictures and I'll post stuff on our Facebook page and the Fitchburg Public Schools Facebook page. And the parents, when I get off the bus, they're like, oh, we could see everything you were doing. It was like we were there. See, we didn't...
It's really good when you do, it's wonderful to follow it every day and all the different events and stuff.
I've still got the pictures, you know, the group picture.
Oh, yeah. One of the girls I ran into the other day, she said, I still have my, at the bank at workers, because when I go there, she's like, I still have my DC shirt, it still fits. So that's fabulous.
Are you still mixing the kids on the bus?
Yes, yes, that is something that we do. We kind of, the chaperones, I, I have bus one because I need to deal with a head tour guide. So we kind of, kind of set it up. But I have bus captains that are the, the chaperones that run the trip for the whole year. And then the support staff that go along with them. So they, bus two will be probably Sean Walker here from Memorial, he'll be the captain of that bus. And Bob Pack from MNA will be the bus three captain. So, and then we mix them all up that they're, the teachers are putting together their, their chaperone groups. It's eight to ten kids in each group. Mr. Baxter and another, and the other paraprofessional has six because we have some of the special needs kids.
That was the whole intent of the program, that kids would be going to Fitchburg High School, get to know one another from the three middle schools and so forth. Have you ever, have you tried to get a reeferling at...
We used to have a really good contact through John Over's office. And I haven't been able to find anybody that's been able to kind of get in. You have to start, we have to start now, it takes a year to get on that list. So we're, I work on it every year and try to, I send the paperwork out and I don't hear anything back. So, yeah, I need to talk to them there. You know somebody, yeah, I'll call you.
I could make a call.
Next year.
Next year, yeah.
Ms. Pierce.
I just want to say thank you because you've run these information nights. You're so well organized. Every parent I know, I have one, I have my daughter going this year, that we're at these meetings, we were just amazed that it's so laid out for us. And it's, so thank you. Because I can, I can imagine it's been a lot of work for you every year.
I think you get better with it, too, stuff that, I've had to change the packets, too, because I, stuff, I just caught one today, your Walkman. Make sure you're responsible for your Walk, I'm like, who had, you know? Like, oh, I better change that, you know?
The amount of time you've given everybody, I think it's really well done. And I just want to say thanks before you go on this mega-energy trip.
I know.
But, and then I have a question. So do all the graders read The Boy in the Striped Pajamas? I know my daughter's read it this year and in preparation for the Holocaust Museum. I was just curious if that's a district thing?
Yeah.
And at the Holocaust Museum, I think it's one of the most memorable visits that, that students come back with. And for myself, having gone twice with Jen on this trip, that is one of those experiences that you can feel it when you go back on the bus with students, how quiet they are and how reflective and appreciative of living in America and their understanding of that historical event. It's from the preparation that happens in the classroom here. So when students go into the museum, they know what to expect. And you can never be ready to visualize it. But they really have a great understanding of the historical context of it.
It's a really great trip.
Jen, what do the tickets cost, I think, for the baseball game?
Oh, my goodness. Well, we, he, the tour company orders them ahead of time. We had tickets, oh, actually, the Capitals, the Nationals, excuse me, those were eight-dollar tickets. I think our tickets are ten dollars in Baltimore.
We had these wonderful seats in Washington National Park. And the tickets, I think, were eleven dollars.
Yeah.
Because, you know, go to Fenway and, you know, center field is like eighty-nine dollars.
Yeah, it's a great deal, it really...
I think I could go... I think I could go to Washington, to Baltimore, and see a game and come back and still spend less money.
It's insane. And I love the fact that we can offer the students so many different opportunities. Museums to a baseball game, to, you know, walking around the city. It's just, you know, the kids really find, oh my, we go by Georgetown on the way to the National Cathedral and up to the zoo, and they're like, oh, it's right here? What do you mean? You know, so we start talking about universities that are right in downtown Washington or right in the area that they can attend. And they, oh, it's really not that far.
Any things that aren't listed here that they're gonna see? They're going down Embassy Row and see all the different embassies and their flags, and it's just...
We ran into, oh, God, John, no. We were on the mall, and a state senator was running by. It was Scott Brown.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Scott Brown. And he had on his shirt, Vote for Scott Brown. I'm thinking, that looks like Scott Brown, but why would he have Vote for Scott Brown on his shirt? You know? And he sees, yeah, yeah. So I'm like, kinda a little starstruck, and, yeah. So he saw the Pittsburgh Public Schools shirts, and he came right over, talked with the kids. He was fabulous. And, and, and for that opportunity for the kids, and one of the kids just shook his hand and said, thank you for all your hard work, even though I quite, don't quite know what you do, but I'll figure it out.
Saw the Obama children coming home from school. They stopped their, their car they were in, put the window down, and spoke to us.
Yeah. So really, it's a fabu, and I love being down there at this time of year, because the school groups are petering out. And on Sunday when we go, I found that the city doesn't really get going till Tuesday. So we really have Washington to ourselves on Mondays. And then the city starts, really starts going on Tuesday when everyone's coming in and getting back to work. So it's, timing has been that moving it to a Sunday's really made a big difference for us. And there's hardly any traffic driving down. We've cut probably an hour and a half to two hours off the bus time, just by going on a Sunday.
And the quality time that students get to spend with one another and with the adults. They come back thinking we're human. You have feelings, too.
The real people.
Yeah, yeah. But I've been going around, I went to Memorial the other day just to talk to the kids about my expectations for behavior. We, they, all the kids get this packet of information. So I just wanted to be really clear about expectations and, you know, what we're, who I am, because sometimes they just look at me and go, oh, you're just another teacher. Well, we have to talk about certain things if there's any behaviors that come up. And, you know, rarely do we have any issues. And usually, we get compliments from people. I was kinda laughing over here when you were talking about our kids from Pittsburgh, because when they do go down there, people come up to us and say, oh, your kids have been fabulous on this trip. They are so polite, so wonderful. And I think that's what keeps me going, is that I've never had an experience where I've had to, you know, call these guys and go, what do I do, you know? So it's been really, the kids have been dynamite. And as soon as we get to, like, Connecticut, they don't lose sight of you. And then they, they wanna know where you are at all times. But then when we're driving home, as soon as we get to Connecticut, we're, you know, they're way too cool for us at that point, so...
But it's true, Jen. It's, it's not just Washington, but our kids from Pittsburgh, when they go on trips, they equip themselves very well.
Yeah, they're dynamite. So that's it.
Thank you.
I, I brought Lottis up with me with, for the AMC trip for our sixth graders. Lottis had approached me last August and said, hey, what are you doing for the sixth grade? We'd like to get in on that. And being the field trip queen that I'm turning into, I said, sure, I'll help you, I'll help you get, get it set up. So Mr. Flahin, Flahin, the assistant principal over at McKay, we've been working pretty closely on this, and unfortunately, he couldn't come in tonight. But there were, we have, I think, thirty-eight children coming from Long Joe. They'll be leaving on the Tuesday after Memorial Day and coming back on a Friday. The teacher that's running the trip opted for the fourth day, just because she thought it was such a wonderful experience for the kids. This is McKay's first year doing it, so they're only gonna go up for three days, just to try it out. And I think once the teachers get a sense, like I told John, once the teachers get a sense of what the program's all about, they'll wanna really step up and kinda take it over from him. That first year for my teachers, I had to do all the legwork and make all the arrangements and put the packets together and do all that stuff. But once that's done, the teachers are like, okay, this is what we really wanna do. They do go up and spend a lot of time in the woods, walking around, doing some biology, looking at different living organisms, the ecosystems. They look at the geology, which is huge up there. For our kids, some of them never get a chance to go out and stomp around in the woods, you know, and muck around and get dirty. And, you know, it's really a great experience for them. And they have everything up there if something happens. The weather's so unpredictable at that time of year. They have raincoats, they have snow jackets, they have warm hats. They have plenty of stuff in case the kids don't have what they need. They've, they've done a really nice job up there with the AMC group, putting stuff together to have those emergency bags for the kids. And all the staff up there are trained, they're mountain, mountain-trained for first aid. They have to go through a pretty rigorous training, so, plus our staff's first aid-certified. So it's, it's really a safe place for the kids to go and experience that. And Joe Dodge Lodge is really nice, and the kids get really great meals. And it, that's another really great trip that we used to do at BF a long time ago. And Craig was really, Craig Shalapa was really good about letting us get it going again. And he'll be going with our sixth graders that week. So he's going to the White Mountains, and the following week, I'm going to Washington, so...
So we have forty-one students from McKay attending. And we will be leaving on Sunday, May twenty-second, at eight-thirty AM, and then returning on Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, at ten-thirty AM. And Mr. Flahin will be going with our, along with two of our teachers and a guidance counselor, Mr. Anthony Semide. And Mr. Flahin is CPR-certified. Both Anthony and Jonathan are med-certified. And our students are really looking forward to this opportunity. And we're thrilled to be able to offer this opportunity for the first time for our students at McKay.
Questions?
Voting on all of them?
Yeah, let's vote.
Well, we're working on pictures too, so we'll get, it's tough, because there's no cell service up there in the White Mountains, so it's tough to get pictures down to us. So we try to post them after the trip.
Okay, we'll be voting on fifteen-six-seven-two and fifteen-six-seven-three. Approve the superintendent recommends to allow eighth-grade middle school students to travel to Washington DC. And approve the superintendent recommends to allow Long Joe's sixth-grade students to travel to AMC White Mountains.
Mayor, may I have a question?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Could you, I'm sorry, ladies, we're just looking at the total cost, and there's a little discrepancy. Is it not the same for every student across the board, or is it because of that fourth day?
We're going for two nights only, for under ninety dollars.
Yeah. Okay. So that, we're doing three nights. My teachers just wanna be up there with the kids, and they opted to do the third night.
Okay, no worries. I was just like, what am I, what am I missing?
We were looking at that too, and I'm like, she's like, yeah, yeah. I was telling you about that.
No, they're just trying, well, they're trying it out too, to see.
Oh, I understand that. I just couldn't piece it.
What's Fisher up to now? Good catch, very good catch.
Yeah, we'll go back to that. You wanna do that at the end?
Yeah, we can do it at the end, make sure we...
You wanna wait?
Yeah, well, we can, we can do them all at once at the end.
Oh, I'm fine, that's fine.
Yeah, we have one more.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Mayor.
If you wanna come up. The next one is the Zeeland Falls Hut field trip.
Hey, everybody.
You're gonna do it again, huh?
Yeah. For those of you who haven't met, my name's Megan Norman, and I teach English at the high school. And I also advise the Outdoor Venture Club. So this year, we are looking to take our third trip up to the White Mountains with a much smaller group than the middle school. They're staying at a roadside hut, but my group will be hiking into the woods and staying at a hut. That's about two-point-eight miles in, at a really beautiful location called Zeeland Falls. So there'll be eight students and two adults. One of the adults will be a staff member from the Youth Opportunities Program, which is a subgroup of the AMC. And we'll be staying two nights at the Zeeland Falls Hut. And any hikes we do, we'll plan from there. The last time I took a group of students there, we did a hike to Z Cliff, which is a really beautiful overlook. The trail leaves right from the hut. And really gives the kids a sense of how far out we are. And, and it's up pretty high, so they absolutely loved that part of the trip.
No electricity?
Yeah, not for them, though. They can't plug in anywhere.
We did see the photos last fall.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, well, I have right now eleven kids who are, who have taken the permission slips. I can only take eight kids, so I'm not sure exactly what the makeup will be. I think of those eleven, four of them are girls. So we'll see. I don't know if, were you remembering, Jeannie, that last time I had a very even group, and all of the girls at the last minute chose not to go? So I ended up with an all-male, an all-male group. And they had a wonderful time, but yeah, that was a little disappointing.
Sure you're gonna get them all up there again.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So next is the school committee draft calendar. So it's basically runs itself, because it's the first and third Monday unless there's any kind of a conflict. And then traditionally, we leave the July and August times open, because we work around topics that need to be worked on or people's vacation and availability. So I don't know if you had any feedback on the calendar?
Any questions from the committee?
Okay.
Thank you.
And then next is the, the second hearing of the budget. So I sent you an email this weekend. There have been no changes since the first presentation. So the PowerPoint, which I presented at that time, is exactly as it was. We're still refining some of the items. I don't think that there's been anything new in terms of grants, so no new information there. We're cautiously optimistic about the kindergarten money, basically because there's been no news. So we're gonna go by the no news is good news. Usually, by this time, as you would know, there'd be some churning going on.
Legislature and whatnot, yeah.
And, and haven't heard any.
I was surprised by that, because the, you know, the shortfall of tax revenue.
Right.
But, okay, that was gonna be my question.
It's not over till it's over.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're still, it just works to our advantage, because we're still refining, you know, how this year is playing out. From now to the end of the year, things can happen. There can be move-ins, outside placements, things like that that could happen. But as of right now, what we shared with you at that last meeting is what we plan to bring forward. Now, what'll happen next for, I think, Wanda, you're the only person who's not been on the school committee. You'll, the next thing you get will be a three-ring binder. And it will have the Munis document, which will actually show the detail of every school in about sixteen different line items. And then it'll have the PowerPoint presentation. It'll have reports about what is in our grants. And then it'll also have a profile from each school and each department about what has been done this year and, you know, some statistical information. And that will come at the, at your last meeting in May, which is, I think, the night before we go to city council. The week before, okay. And then I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add?
No, I think Superintendent Rabinal did a good job explaining where we're at. We're just compiling all the, all the reports from various schools and departments. As usual, we have an overview, you know, the city's funding, net school spending. So it really provides a comprehensive summary of what's going on at the schools and with the school department. And we're really just in the final stages of putting the right people and the right lines in the budget. We're trying to use our, the Munis software a little bit more, because it should be used for budgeting. So that's in process, and we're gonna try to wrap that up really in the next few days, so then it can go to print and be distributed for, for next Tuesday's meeting.
And in terms of projecting next year, we, you know, again, these numbers are, you know, still early. But our enrollment right now is, we're on an increase again. So if we're watching what's going on in the enrollment center and watching our numbers, we were debating back and forth, the possibility, I think I might have even mentioned that, we were looking at possibly reducing one kindergarten, because it looked like, but we're looking at the latest, because we look at these every week, sometimes a couple times a week. And the trend that we're seeing is that that's not gonna happen. So that, that's good news, because students are coming. And it, that's the, what will drive the potential income for next year, because that's what drove it this year.
What was our October first? What was it up by?
This year, one-fifty-one.
One-fifty-five.
Five, one-fifty-five.
What?
What's up?
That's good money for us.
Yeah, and right now, we're over ninety. What, we were, yeah, our enrollment, so on October first, the enrollment was up one-fifty-five, which is what generates your chapter seventy for this coming year. And right now, we're, we were in the nineties, and now we're above that right now for neck, for the following year. And that'll be solidified on October first of this coming October.
So with the email that you had sent out about, you know, that accountability data and, and seats available in charter schools, when do we get that number? And how does that impact what you're, what we're looking at for next year?
Well, we've, we've got the number.
So the number we're using is the number?
The number that, yes, is the seven-six, seven-seventy-six or something like that. Under the new accountability, our new accountability piece. And with the raising of, should the cap be raised, that ballot question is on in November, our portion of that would be another seven-hundred-and-seventy-six students, potentially.
But we have no idea of whether those students exist or not, right?
Right, and we, and there hasn't been an app, they, they, I forget what the deadline is for an application for the, for the following year's charter. I think it's August.
It's, yeah, it's August.
I guess what I'm wondering is, can that create a big problem next year?
Well, it would be, it would be the year after. It would be the year after. So right now, we're going by the knowns, and what we know now is what we're sharing with you at this point.
Other comments? I, I should also mention that this, this budget, city budget, will fully meet net school spending. So if hopefully the, the council will see their way clear to voting for this budget, certainly. I mean, there's a lot more to the budget, but I think that's a great, I, I think we, we made every effort to, to meet that, and it's that important. So we have, and hopefully the, the council will agree with that.
Council, council has been very supportive of schools.
They have, yeah.
Very supportive of schools.
Okay. Superintendent, we're talking about the record, the warrants. Eight-seventy-four and eight-eighty?
Yep.
All right, you wanna just vote, you wanna vote all of them from fifteen-six-seventy-one up through and including fifteen-six-seven-seven? Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Motion made. Wait a second.
I, I, I...
Yeah.
Six-seventy, seventy-one on...
Yeah, we're bundling.
Seventy-one on?
Yeah, six-seventy-one up through and including six-seventy-seven.
Like comment on six-seventy-one, a school? And I don't know how the people feel, but I've seen other schools advertise. I don't know, Superintendent, is that something that you might consider doing, advertising? Our school choice, Sentinel, and listing all of our programs? I mean, we're not cutting programs, you know?
We've never done it, but it's always a first time.
I'd have to say I wouldn't like to see that. I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I, I mean, this is the crux of the whole problem, right? And I, and...
And I, and I understand that we need to survive, and, and so we benefit somewhat, we lose tremendously, right? But I, I just feel like, I don't know, this, my own personal feeling, like, this is really the problem. And, and I feel like we were, we'd be adding to it. But I understand that we, we need to open up the school choice, and I, and I want to do that in this environment, but I don't know if I'd support wanting it.
I'm, well, I'm looking at how many, we lose students to school choice. You know, can we keep students from leaving, rather than bringing, you know, letting?
I think, if I may, I think what our approach has been is to put all of our efforts in keeping the students here who are here.
That's what I'd like to see.
And I think we do that best when our high school students and our high school staff go to our middle schools, do the classroom visits. You've experienced some of that. Now they're going down into the elementary schools. As you know from some of the stuff that I've written, I'm not a big fan of school choice. I believe that school choice has been, has become the way that school districts take tax dollars from other communities to fund their cities and towns, because they don't want to raise the taxes to do it. And I feel it's very negative, but it's almost like the use of performance-enhancing drugs in athletics. What happens is when you find that everyone else is using them, and they're winning races that you used to win, you feel, am I some sort of a fool for not using, you know, the, these things? And, and I think I can honestly say right now that the student, the families that are choosing Pittsburgh for school choice are choosing it because of programs that we run, that they really believe in, that are not being offered in other communities. And otherwise, you're just offering the same thing. So I think we've done a really good job in the last two or three years of getting a lot of really good public relations, media, either, you know, through the Sentinel or through our Facebook page or whatever, that I would like to just continue to do that. Because I, if I felt like we were at a disadvantage, and maybe, you know, you're all seeing it too, I don't personally believe that we are any longer at a disadvantage. I really don't. I think we have a good reputation out there, and I think if people are watching what's going on in the newspaper, they're seeing that we offer comprehensive programs in all areas. What surrounding community just had 18 students visit from China, and give all of our high school students an incredible firsthand experience of a culture that is the center of pretty much everything going on in the world right now. We do that. So I, so I'm thinking, that's really good PR. And, you know, my goal will be to continue having these students come, and then eventually, hopefully next year, start sending some of our own students. And I just texted Jeremy and said, would it be crazy of us to think about offering an elective in Mandarin?
No, it would not be.
So if you heard a shout coming from Westminster, it was Jeremy opening his phone and seeing that text. But I think, you know, I think we have to keep alert and keep looking at it. If I was seeing over the last three or four years that there was this continual drain and more and more students going out, but to be frank, we're not seeing that. It's leveled off, because I think we're convincing people that if they stay here, we're offering everything that they need.
Okay, I'll move the.
Well, once again, 15-671 up through and including 15-677. Motion made, second. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? As unanimous, no need for executive session. Do I hear a motion?
Before everyone leaves, I just have some papers that I need all the committee members to sign.
Okay. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Vote for adjournment.
Motion made, second to adjourn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
You're adjourned. Good job, Mr. Mayor.